Mayor Rowan Dollar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Conneball.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger.
Here.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith. City Attorney Terry Hirsch.
Here.
City Administrator James Tenshun.
Here.
We do have a forum and are able to do the business of the city of Newport. Item three, it's approval of the minutes of previous meetings. Item A is approval of the minutes of the regular session from June 10th, 2025. Do those separately or jointly?
Separately.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session from June 10th, 2025. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Item B is approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of June 30th, 2025.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board then to approve the minutes of the previous meeting from the special call meeting of June 30th, 2025. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. No proclamations on a recognition of citizens by the mayor at this time. Communications from our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I've got a couple of announcements. The first, on August the 2nd, which is a Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we will be having a farmer's market customer appreciation day here in the parking lot at City Hall. There'll be free giveaways and also drawings for door prices. The farmer's market's doing well. The participation's been very good so far. We've got a lot of positive feedback and the weather has mostly cooperated. So, I feel like so far it's been a success and I think it'll continue to grow both in vendors and in customers as time goes on, especially when the local crops start coming in more. The golf course will be reopening Saturday at noon to the public. There's going to be a grand opening celebration. I know several people have been invited to that. I know the board is invited to that. I have a conflict that day. I won't be able to be there. I have a family get-together, but it is good news that the golf course is going to get open. The big thing I've got is that something that come to our attention, as it's prone to happen, seems like after the agenda was put together. The laws have changed on city court and it went into effect July 1. And we need to amend our rules for city, for our city court system. There's a letter in your packet explaining all the changes. There are several, but I'd like for you to suspend the rule and put that on the agenda for y'all's consideration on first reading tonight, if you all are good with that. Motion to suspend the motion.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules for consideration of, what else was it, James? For consideration of?
First reading.
First reading.
Of the approval of the new rules.
Okay.
Of ordinance number?
Of ordinance, okay. Ordinance number 2025-12. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Motion carries. Thank you.
The last thing is this Thursday will be our fourth concert in the summer series. I don't remember who the band is, but it will be at 7:00. We had a good crowd at the lights from Mountain Edge because the weather cooperated, so we finally had a good night. It wasn't too hot and it didn't rain, so hopefully that'll hold up. Now, they're calling for rain 60% Thursday, so I don't know. We'll see how our luck is. That's all I got.
I have one question on the golf course.
Yes, sir.
Is it the course that's opening or is it clubhouse and all the other facilities up there?
All I know, all they told me was that the golf course was reopening at noon. They were having a grand reopening at noon Saturday.
Course opens at?
I don't know. That's all I was told. Okay. That was almost related to me when I got the phone call from Mr. Hallbeck.
Okay.
So, the golf course itself is opening at 8:00?
Uh huh.
Okay. Yeah, he just told me they're having a reopening at noon Saturday.
Thank you. All right. On item six, it's appointment of boards, commissions, and committees, of which item A is consideration of reappointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mr. Chip Hourby's term.
I make a motion to reappoint Chip Hourby to that board.
Okay, we have a motion on board. Consideration of reappointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mr. Chip Hourby's term. It has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, consideration of reappointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mr. Chuck Strange's term.
I'll make the motion to Chuck Strange. Second.
Okay, we have a motion then for consideration of reappointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Mr. Chuck Strange's term has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And mayors have like sign? Hearing none, motion carries. Reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Does anyone have anything to report?
I did.
Okay.
When the flood happened and we lost the interstate again and the traffic started back, probably three or four days later, I guess, something like that, I was coming down from where Tim Duckers house at Con Agar. I saw three cars almost get hit because the people from not, from not from here don't know there's a red light. One of them three was me. And I got a phone call later about somebody. And so, when all those things happened, I called James and said, can we put something prior to the light to let them know? And before the end of that day, James and whoever he called, Ben or whoever it was anyway, they got those light signs put up in front of Food City and it seemed to help. And I just wanted to say, on behalf of those three, including me, that didn't get hit and almost got hit though, we appreciate the signs.
Yes, sir.
Getting that done that quick.
We also, excuse me, we also about a day later had a complaint from Scott Williams, the hospital administrator, about the same issue. And he said he about got hit again. And he asked, could we have the police come up there? And I relayed that on to Chief Lamb and he had, he's had some of his guys up there monitoring it. So, we've also had some police presence up there.
Mayor, I have something on Randy's.
Tom, I just wanted to say that.
Matthew, I talked to Scott a while back. Two red lights in the city. One at West End, coming out of Food City. If you're not looking at the light, you've got 10 seconds to get out. And you know, there is nothing dangerous about it, but sometimes two or three vehicles at the most can get out. And he was going to check on adding a few more seconds to that. Are you familiar with what the light?
I really may be. Um, for snacks. Hey, the equipment's too old to be able to do that, so we've looked at pricing out what upgrades it would take to do that, because that's one of the worst ones in town, really.
Sure is.
It's just older equipment. You can't really adjust it more than, more than already exists.
Yeah, it's 10 seconds. You better be on the pedal. Another one, Gary and Matthew, coming off of Jonesy Circle in front of the Western Auto. That one don't stay green long and at high traffic times, it backs up almost all the way to the ambulance service.
The, a couple of months ago, we approved, you guys approved, an application for a modern traffic modernization grant. The first one that I mapped the whole city for that, the one on the west end, that one you're talking about, the one at Hedrick, because Hedrick needs to adjust for just half an hour in the morning, half an hour in the evening, a couple months a year. But traffic backs up that trying to come out of Hedrick on the Costco aisle. And again, the equipment was so old that you couldn't adjust it like that. So, the, you know, from 3:00 to 3:30 that you got a longer out, a longer green light if you're going east off of, out of Hedrick. So, we're starting with Hedrick and then if it goes smoothly, that grants every year, so we could knock these out, you know, and over the next three years, we could do the other two. And then any other ones that may create problems need to be updated and modernized. So, that's, we're working on it. It's just, you know, if there's money out there to do something, if we need it, if it's emergency like we did with Lincoln Avenue, it's something that we could do fairly, because that will just have that signal that it's fairly expensive to do it, but replacing the cabinet and a lot of that stuff to make the timing different is more expensive, so.
Patience and money.
Yes, sir. If this Hedrick project goes pretty smooth, then I'd say that we'll start offering out with that grant whenever we're here.
Thank you.
One of the issues that, coming off Jones Circle, as y'all are aware, there is, the entrance to Prospect is right there, right as soon as you turn off at the bank. And there, you know, there's signage there that asks you not to block that intersection. Okay, that creates a gap. Only two cars can fit into the space there if you keep that, the intersection, open. Okay, it's, the traffic, the light itself, is controlled by pressure in the, in the road. You know, it sensors, the word I was struggling for. And so, if, if the cars do what they're supposed to do and leave that gap there, and that gap remains when they go over that sensor, that sensor senses the gap and turns the light back red because it thinks only two cars will come. If the car that keeps the gap open, so when they see that light first turn green, will move up and stay, keep the traffic condensed, it'll stay, you can get eight or nine cars, because I go that way all the time. And you can tell immediately if somebody drags when that light turns green, if they leave, don't close that gap before they cross that sensor, it'll turn right back. Two, three cars is all get out of there. And that's just a little trick that you got to learn, but that's, that's part of the problem there. And I don't know how you fix that, because if you keep making them not block that intersection, then that, then the sensors, you know, even the newer ones operate off sensors. Sensors run the thing. You can either have the video sensors, the motion sensors, or the ground sensors. And those up there, I'm pretty certain are ground sensors, the older ones. The newer ones are going to the motion video sensors. And I don't know if those are more accurate or not. I don't, I'm not versed on that well enough to know. But, but that's what creates the problem of there. If they would, if that third vehicle, now sometimes they don't leave a gap. They, they close the gap and when that happens, it'll, you can get eight or nine cars out there. But if they leave that gap like they're supposed to and they don't close it before they cross the sensor, then it thinks traffic's done and it flips it back to red.
Right. Mayor, thank you.
Oh, we ready to move on? I guess so. Old business, unfinished business. Consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-11, city of Newport adopting the 2021 international fire code and 2021 NFPA 101 life safety code.
So, Mayor, I'll read that caption into the record. It's ordinance number 2025-11, an ordinance to amend the city of Newport municipal code Title VII, fire protection and fireworks, Chapter 3, fire codes, adopting of the 2021 international fire code and the 2021 NFPA 101 life safety code and repealing ordinance number 2016-12 and ordinance number 2018-01.
Okay, I've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board for consideration of second reading of ordinance number 2025-11, city of Newport adopting the 2021 international fire code and 2021 NFPA 101 life safety code has been properly seconded. We need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conneball.
Yes.
Motion carries. New business, it's consideration of resolution number 2025-11, hiring engineering firm for the police department and animal control projects.
Tangentially related to this, I do want to say that the governor's relief and recovery fund that we put in a proposal for is going to pay for park to float, they awarded us $207,543,000, which is almost 100% of that project. And of course, we're going through all the FEMA steps too. We also put in for the police department, we did not get that one, but it didn't say that move on. It said go through FEMA steps first. And then, I know, Trey laughed, but that's what, but they said, and I've talked to a lot of folks in Irwin and Lisbethan and Greenville, and they didn't get a lot awarded either. I don't know what the counties got awarded there or here. So, we're thinking that, me and the folks that I talk to, we're thinking there's still a lot of money there, but they just want everyone to see if the federal dollar will pay for it first before they use the state dollar, which I guess makes sense, but also there's lots of people that want roads and bridges and hospitals built back, so probably better if they went ahead and funded those. That's okay. The actual agenda item is we've got an architect for the PD and the animal control building. We will need an engineer to help us lay out the main street extension and the site plan, drainage and all that for the site. And this is Robert Campbell Group. We're through business with them all the time and they are very well, very well experienced in this kind of thing, so recommend to hire them.
Okay, I've heard the presentation. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have, excuse me, we have a motion on the board to approve consideration of resolution number 2025-11, hiring engineering firm for the police department and animal control projects has been properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Well, we need a roll call.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conneball.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is consideration of three-way stop intersection at Buckingham and Morrell Springs Road.
Okay, so, the, was the plan, and there still is, it's just the timeline's going to shift, but Street Department, we were going to be able to come in and demo a couple of the more aggressive humps that limit visibility on Morrell Springs and try to make it safer. Part of that plan was for our state STBG paving funding to come in right after we finish that and repave everything and properly compact where the humps are going to be removed. Well, it's state money and we got to go on their timeline and their timeline and our timeline did not jive, so, and we're hoping to do it this summer for school, but also maybe this is better because it's not 90, it won't be 92 degrees whenever we get to it. But, so, this is alternate proposal. It would be to put a stop sign, a three-way stop at Buckingham and Morrell Springs to try and calm traffic down. There's a plan in your packet about the signage proposed and the distance where each of it will be placed. It's a lot less expensive than the demo of the humps, so if this helps those folks in those neighborhoods, then we did it for a lot, you know, we fixed a problem with a lot less money than it would have taken. And also, if everybody hates it, we can just take it out. So, I guess the two options would be to look at would be to say yes, let's go for three options. Say yes, let's go forward. Say no, you're an idiot, sit down. Or three, we could possibly say maybe, but we want more public feedback. But I've talked to a couple of folks that live in the neighborhood and everyone seems to think it's a great idea to make it safer for them to, like Mike McCarter said, he's just living that Bon Jovi lifestyle and living on a prayer every time he pulls out of his driveway. So, if we can discuss or make recommendations to change what I put there in front of you, but it's just something I, that we've all thought about, let's give this a shot and see if it helps. And Chief Lamb, we've talked to, I've talked to him about like what, because we're going to have to have somebody there for a while, just to make people alert to it. And we'll do, and we'll do a marketing campaign to kind of alert everybody to what, to what the change is going to be and when it's going to happen.
Will there be any kind of signage as you approach that stop sign?
Yes, the plan is for a temporary new traffic pattern sign at 2,000 feet. The, it's on, I'm trying to remember in my head, it's on that paper. At 1,000 feet, there's a stop ahead, yeah, that's it. And then, we're going to paint stop ahead on the, on the actual road. Or it says ahead stop if you read it top to bottoms, it's kind of trips with your brain, but.
Yeah, I see it there now.
Yeah, both, in both directions, the same. So, the, I didn't make the map big enough to show the temporary signage that would just sit down there, but you'd be at like Heritage on one end and Ellison Road on the other.
Yeah, I'm all in. I got a 17-year-old granddaughter coming out there.
Oh, and the signs are going to be 36 inches by 36 inches, which is typically what's used on a foreland, so it may look oversized, but then once everybody gets used to it, we can pare down to the normal size signs, if that's the, you know, if we see that that's what is the best fit.
Is it possible to put little flashers on top of those signs?
I've looked at that, yeah, and I was thinking that that might be the best, to get that kind of stop sign. And then, yeah, once every.
At least temporarily.
Yes, yes, exactly. And it's, it's, you know, it's a little bit more money, but if you save a life than what, yeah, yeah.
And it's, that road is so heavily traveled.
Yes.
We're going to have to do a lot to bring awareness to this.
Yeah.
Yes, they fly.
I still like the long-term goal of getting rid of humps.
I agree with you. Yes, sir.
No offense, guys, but we know the nature of the beast. You know, people running the humps are still there.
Yeah, the, well, plan's still in place that we will do the demo, but it's just better if, I don't think we've got the capability or the equipment to compact properly. So, what the engineers with TDOT will do, not TDOT, the engineers that are doing the drawing for us, they'll show, you know, I'm sure it'll be Newport paving, they get all our contracts, but, because they bid the lowest, but it'll show where to go in and compact and how to, how much more top, top coat to put on it, or what kind of asphalt been. I feel like I'm speaking in language I don't understand right now, but, but it'll show different, a different amount of asphalt and a different amount of compaction where we took out the hump to make it all properly engineered.
Was that a motion?
It is.
Okay. We have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion then to approve consideration of three-way stop intersection at Buckingham and Morrell Springs Road being properly seconded. Please signify your acceptance by aye.
Aye.
Mayors have like sign? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item C, it's consideration of left turn signal intersection at Broadway and Coke.
This one's been cooking for a while. We've had Old Smokey, who's probably our second largest employer next to the school system, request this. Newport Utilities has requested it. It's a dedicated turn signal for the westbound turning lane on Broadway at where ORNL Credit Union's going to be between that and the Marathon. It wouldn't be, you wouldn't need one the other direction because Coke doesn't continue on and there's the business there. I think it's Williams Lawn Care. And it's, we had one single submission for it, which is in your packet, which is Stancil. It costs about the same as the Lincoln Avenue dedicated turn did. And if, you know, Old Smokey keeps expanding down there, you're going to have more and more people possibly turning that direction to go to work. We've tried before, if anybody, if we get this out, we've tried before to get TDOT to do it for us, but they always said their traffic count doesn't warrant it. But also, I know lots of people that won't turn there because it's hard to, so they'll just go down Locust and then cut around, but.
Did you say east, westbound or eastbound?
Eastbound, sorry, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he said westbound, but it's eastbound.
Yes.
What is the cost on that game?
Eighty-nine hundred, hang on.
Eight, less than $10,000?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It's way under budget. Not way under budget, it's under budget. Pull it up.
Eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy.
There you go, eighty-nine hundred and something, some change.
It's on the back page, on the back.
Oh, yeah, I printed weird, sorry.
I think the public safety is always working.
Randy has two copies, maybe that's what it is.
Yeah, I got to see.
He stole everybody else's.
Yeah, there should be two pages in there.
Yeah, it printed front and back.
You step one.
I don't know. I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
Second.
Okay, we have motion then for consideration of a left turn signal intersection of Broadway and Coke on the eastbound side of 257. It has been properly seconded, I believe, so what's the board's pleasure? Well, we, this is, we need a roll call on this one, I guess, though. Need a roll call, Tina.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Ottinger.
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Conneball.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D is consideration of applying for a grant for the seniors through ethra. And I think you have a letter in your packet that details what this is, what this is all about. Ms. Robinson, would you like to?
The grant has already been applied for. The deadline was May the 27th. What we're needing, it's a renovation grant from AARP, and we would like to have the walls painted, the floor, new flooring put down, and the fire marshal has indicated to us that we need to change our cooktop to a commercial cooktop. So, what we're asking is that the city council help us with the 10% match, which is like 1,300 and something dollars there.
Well, it says on the letter that it is 113820. Is that different from?
That's the, that's what we're, that's what the grant is written for, 11,382. We're asking the city to help us meet the 10% match of 1,138 and 20 cents.
I have a question.
Sure.
This is showing a cooktop that you're buying.
Yes.
But the fire marshal, from my knowledge, it's been five years since I've been gone. It should be a hood system.
We have.
And if you're cooking, if you're not cooking, but I was cooking, it would be, the fire marshal wouldn't care about your cooktop, is my point.
Well, we have a commercial oven. We do have a hood that has recently been installed by the city. And he said that because we have a commercial oven, that we should have a commercial cooktop.
Okay, I asked Bertie a while ago, and it's 1,100 dollars, I'm not fine with that number, but what I don't want to be is not in fire code. And if we're not using a commercial hood, then it wouldn't matter what you're cooking on, if we don't have a commercial hood installed to take care of cooks, if you're cooking. So, I don't know. So I don't know if you're cooking hot, I'm not putting it in there to watch, you know. If you're just eating something, it's probably different.
That's basically what we do. We don't fry anything, or we cook warm water.
I understood the rest of it, but I don't think a cooktop wouldn't fall under the fire code.
But, and if I understand from Monica that the hood that was installed was commercial, I'm just going on hearsay.
That's true. He was my fire, he was my fire inspector.
It's okay for what it is, that Barry went in because there's a complaint about the smell. And when he went in, he give a, a, kind of left a paper for them to understand what's going on. So here's what the deal is, is if you've got a residential stove top and you're only warming food, you don't have to have the type one commercial kitchen system. And it's kind of spelled out here in the paper that went to Southern Sign that applies only to residential equipment in use. We have a fire extinguisher, it's not an assembly occupancy, and then the jurisdiction, authority having jurisdiction approves it, which means you're not frying hamburgers, french fries, or any of that. You're only, you're only warming stuff up or you're boiling in water or baking it. Now, the hood system you got, it's commercial grade, but it's a type two. So that's just to pull odors and that stuff out. If you put a commercial stove top in, you have to put a type one hood system in that has an extinguishing system. And it also has to be fitted out the building, either blowing up through the floors with special fire ratings, or out the window and above all types of exhaust. So as long as you, as long as you meet the guideline on this one right here that's God, what you have would be sufficient, unless you change how the type of cooking is and things, but it's on it.
The reason, the question was, I didn't want to, you have to come back up here and say, well, now we got to have a hood system.
Yeah, because, because that hood system-
I knew that was the answer.
-costs you 12, 15,000 dollars to run that, I think, to do that type system.
Well, this, this came from the Rapid Fire guy.
He's, he's a contractor-
He's not the Fire Marshal.
That, yeah, he's not the, but he'll also tell you that too, that if you put a commercial cook stove in, then you'd have to have a commercial hood. And if it's a cook stove, then it would be a type one. That has to have an ancil system or a pyrochem type system in it that has to be checked every, every six months on that, so.
I do want to add in, because the stove came up, for the city of Newport to operate food, anybody really, not just the city, you have to have a permit from the state, and then you have to have a health inspection. So do you all have those things?
No.
Okay. I don't know that you can continue to operate now that it's been brought up to council, you know, that, without those things. Because the city follows codes, the pool, and the concession there, and at the basketball games, they have to have a permit, and we have to apply every year. And we get two of those, and then we also have to have the inspection. And with that, there's an insurance question. Because if you're doing these things, and it's in a city building, and now the city's been made aware, and you're not following code, you don't have the insurance necessarily to cover what happens in that building. Meaning, if something happens in that building because of that stove, we're probably not going to get anything from our insurance company. They are not going to cover it. We're not in compliance with code, not only with, I don't understand everything Jeremy's talking about, but that's okay. But I do understand the permits. And, you know, there's a couple of things, and like I said, now that it's come up, it has to be addressed. So we're not, you know, in a good position to let that continue. That, of course, is up to the board. As far as donations on that respect, if there is to be a donation that the city's going to make to any entity, you do have to have 501(c)(3), which I'm sure you do, you have to be up on your annual filings, I think it's Form 940 or 990 with the federal, and, you know, I have to have a copy of the last audit, and then a copy of the budget for where the money, whichever year the budget, or the money is going to be spent in. You know, I don't know which year you follow. And then, as I understand, you know, we need to have an announcement so that the public has a chance to comment, and if we're going to start, you know, giving money to any nonprofit. And that's, the process is the same, and I've explained it that way to anybody that's ever asked me, you know, come forward. And they don't usually always come to council, they'll contact me directly, and that's what I've explained to them. So I just want to make you aware of those things. And the insurance is a, is a concern. Because we're having trouble now, you know, with the police department, with a legitimate flood. And we're still arguing, trying to get to a, just a close number, you know, that we could both agree on. We're not even, it's, we're one with that. So I just, I think the board needs to be aware of these things.
Thank you.
Well, my concern, since it's a city building, should this not have been initiated through Gary's office to bring it presented to us?
Pardon me, I'm sorry.
Since it's a city-owned building, should this proposal not have come to us through Gary's office?
Well, I'm not exactly, I'm not trying to interrupt, but to expand on what Alderman Hansel's saying, I'm still not exactly clear, are we just making a donation to them, and that's the end of it? Or are we, are we supposed to apply for something? Because if, if it's something we're supposed to apply for, it would have to go through Gary. But the way it was explained tonight by Ms. Robinson, it sounds like she's just wanting a donation to make the match, and that extend of our involvement. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought I understood you to say, but I was like Alderman Hansel, to begin with, I was under the impression we were going to be applying for the grant. So that was a miscommunication on our part, because I was like him, that's what I thought, that we were being asked to apply for the grant and pay the match. And so, so I was, I was, I was confused on that myself. Because if we were to apply for the grant, it would have to be done by Gary.
Right. And with that, if, you know, I couldn't find this grant online, but we would still need to see terms, you know, and conditions, and what is expected as a city, because the city owns the asset that the changes are being made, is a capital project, and the city owns the asset. So you, there's something in there somewhere. You know, I have to understand what our responsibilities are going forward from that. And I said, I just couldn't find any information. So I would need, still need the app.
Okay. Any other discussion, questions?
Is there a, is there a deadline, like you said, of the, of the essence that we need to make a decision tonight, or is this something we can do a little more digging into? But are you fighting a deadline?
Fighting a deadline. The project's supposed to be completed September the 30th. Thursday, we will be meeting in Knoxville at ETHRA, and they will be deciding who's going to get the, get awarded. And contracts will be signed then.
I got you. Thank you.
So I will relay all this information on to them on Thursday.
I was just curious, because it seems like there's a lot of confusion, so.
Is it a community challenge grant?
Yes.
Okay. Because, you know, it's not, I couldn't find it either, you know, it's a, it's not a renovation grant, it's a community challenge. Are you sure they'll let you pull that on you since you own the building?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's a deal.
That, we've been talking about this grant for the last four months. So it's just been out there, so they're trying to meet the deadline. But they do know that the, we do not own the building, and these, this money's been offered to all senior seniors in the East Tennessee.
Yeah, that's, that's different than what we thought.
All right.
Any other discussion?
And in reference to the insurance and that kind of thing, we didn't know we needed a permit. No one brought that to our attention, and we would have no way of knowing that. Thank you.
I need some clarification on what we're voting on.
I don't think we are able to vote on anything at this point.
The letter says, never, not in, hang on. The letter intended, that's what you need by Thursday, right?
Yes.
Terry, is there, I mean, I think if you pull this stove out of it, it's not a bad grant application. Because like Jeremy was saying, the stove indicates like possibly thousands more dollars would be worth.
And the insurance problem.
If there's no stove-
Painting and flooring's-
Is probably fine.
Right.
Could you buy something else besides a stove with the grant name?
Flooring, painting, yeah, that's it. So that's not, that's not a bad proposal.
How does that come Thursday out? And assuming you're not actually cooking, you're only reading, you won't need a commercial hood, correct?
Yeah, but you have a commercial hood.
I mean, a commercial stove top, yes.
I don't know if that would impact the permits. Molly, can you speak more?
I can.
And that might be, I think the health inspector is now, so that might be somebody-
There may be a new government. There is a county that inspected us.
Well, I'd say for selling candy bars and things, if you've got to have one for that, but surely-
I mean, it doesn't-
Yeah, well, yeah, because even us, we're just reusing some of our stuff.
Yeah. I mean, I know churches have to have it, so if they're, don't have one, then I just wouldn't say. But I don't know that we can get around it.
We can do it in, I don't know.
Is that five minutes?
I wake up coffee. I didn't get it. Okay. I don't see anything that we have to vote on at this point. I think if we, this is going to be tabled until we have further information. Is that what the board desires?
So, yes.
Is that it?
Second.
Oh, okay, we got, we got a motion then. We're gonna, I guess we'll try to get some more information and bring it back, kind of later date.
Hey, Mayor, if it doesn't seem for anybody's how you feel about it, the community challenge grant's available every year, so it's something that, if they, if they can't get it without the commitment, then come back around next year and go into it, pop away.
So we still need to, maybe-
Oh, it's definitely-
Now that you're aware, it's been brought to you about the stove. So now we have to deal with the insurance. And I think that there is an issue there. They will not cover loss to the building if we knowingly allow that and didn't have everything in place that's needed for the Fire Marshal.
Does, does the money have to come from a certain location, or could it, just so you get the money?
I think we have a motion on the board then, it's been properly seconded. What's the board's pleasure?
What are we voting on?
Tabled.
To do this?
Yes, to do.
Table it.
Table it.
Okay.
Any vote? Signify acceptance by aye.
Aye.
And ayes have like sign. Motion carries. It brings this back to, at a later date.
Add that to the agenda.
Okay. We have an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title III Municipal Court Updating to Reflect Changes in TCA Municipal Courts.
Yes, this will be the first reading of that ordinance, and the mayor read the caption into the record.
What's the board's pleasure?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion on the board then to approve ordinance number 2025-12, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title III Municipal Court Updating to Reflect Changes in TCA Municipal Courts has been properly seconded. What's the board's pleasure?
That's roll call, I think.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Mike Hansel?
Yes.
Honor Woman Luanna Oninger?
Yes.
Alderman Randy Reagan?
Yes.
Last Mayor Connie Ball?
Yes.
Good. Motion carries. Thank you.
And Mayor, going back there, senior citizens issue, Ms. Robinson, I think it would be a great idea from a legal standpoint for you all to sit down with Ms. Tina and make sure all of our permits are applied for, so that we are covered by our insurance. We want to make sure all of that's done. Thank you.
Sure. Item 10, Bid Purchases and Expenses, which we have none on the agenda today. Comments from citizens. All right, in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.